Yeah. If you, uh, is my mic on? If you have a purple sheet, please come and turn that in here to Leanna. If you have a purple sheet and you would like to speak, please turn it in.
So is there any more of these, you guys? Anybody else? Because once we start, we're not collecting anymore.
I call this meeting to order. Row call.
David Rose?
Here.
Matthew Houston?
Here.
Lisa Roman?
Here.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Here.
Uh, now for a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We need to approve, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
David Rose?
Yes.
Matt Houston?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
All right, we want to thank everyone for being here this evening, um, for the special meeting. And, uh, the reason that we are here tonight is following our last school board meeting. Um, there was several Facebook posts, phone calls made, uh, both to the district, to some of the board members personally, uh, from parents about their dislike of the school calendar. And, and so we made the decision that all voices matter. Um, we're here tonight because teachers' voices matter, staff voices matter, and parents' voices matter. And we want everyone's input to be able to be heard. Um, this evening, we will have a call to the public. If you've signed in, we want to hear your opinion. Um, every decision that this board makes affects everything that happens in this district. And so it's important that we are hearing your voices as we make these decisions. And so that's why we are here tonight. Um, I do want to, we want to kind of clear some rumors. Um, we know that there has been some rumors, based on the emails a lot of us have been getting, that we are looking to move this school calendar to September. Uh, that is a rumor. That is not, um, discussion. Don't know where that came from, but that is not something at least myself, as the school board president, am looking at. Um, tonight, we're here simply to discuss, uh, the start date. And, uh, that is what is on the agenda item and, uh, was asked by parents to be able to talk about. Um, there was a survey that was sent out, um, to all parents, teachers, and staff. And we have those results this evening. And, uh, Dr. Jamie Festa-Dagel will be sharing those.
Mr. President and Governing Board, so we had eight hundred and fourteen parent responses, two hundred and sixty-eight staff responses, and then a hundred and nine responses that were both a parent guardian or guardian and a staff member, for a total of eleven hundred and ninety-one responses. Of those responses, four hundred and six, or thirty-seven point two-eight percent, um, wanted to keep the current board adopted calendar. Of those, uh, total responses, six hundred and eighty-three, which are sixty-two point seven-two percent, wanted it moved to Monday, August 4th. There were a variety of comments, um, about miscellaneous items not directly related to that. There were thirty-ish comments that did have that September date. And then a variety of other dates in October, but, uh, or August. August, not October. And so I do think that the, the information helps us think forward, um, as we are collecting data for that further calendar.
Awesome, thank you. And I want to personally thank every teacher, every parent that has taken time to email us, uh, to email me. Um, I've tried to respond to all of them. Your input matters. And the information that you shared was very helpful, uh, to me to really understand, um, as a new board member, um, things like travel club, our sports, um, our coaches trying to schedule games with other schools. Uh, those things are important. It is not this board's intent to disrupt, um, the business of the district. That's not, uh, why we're here. We don't want to disrupt the lives of teachers or parents or vacations. All those things, uh, factor into how we do the calendar. Um, and again, tonight, we just wanted to be able to give you a platform for your voice to be heard. We don't always have to agree. We have to respect one another. We are Lake Havasu. Um, I believe we are one of the best districts and we are going to be the best district in all of Arizona. And we can do that together. And, um, and part of that is having these discussions that aren't always easy. We may not always agree with one another, but we need to be able to hear each other out. And, um, so that's why I requested to the superintendent for this meeting, um, because parents and teachers both said, hey, uh, I would like my voice to be heard. Um, so before we open up to the call to the public, um, I'm going to ask that Dr. Jamie Festa-Dagel, who is our Director of Student Services, it is her team, um, that worked on this current calendar. And, uh, she is going to explain to you this evening, uh, the reason for the calendar, what it looks like, um, for those who were not at our last school board meeting, um, or have not watched, uh, the video from that school board meeting. Dr. Jamie Festa-Dagel.
Thank you. So just some general things, um, for everyone to know. Um, things that are important, uh, for the calendar. We operate preschool through high school. Uh, high schools are typically run, well, our high schools run on a semester schedule. Our middle schools run on a quarter schedule. And then we have our elementary school students and, and we have one calendar that fits us all. In order for students at the high school level to be done with their finals prior to us leaving for winter break, that requires us to basically count nine weeks and nine weeks back. Um, otherwise, we're asking students to study, do projects, continue work for first semester, and take finals in January. We also have a number of students that take dual enrollment classes, and that would be a very different schedule than our community college partners. Our middle school runs as a quarter. So if you are a middle school teacher, you see a new group of kids every nine weeks. It makes a big difference if one week you have eight, or one quarter you have eight weeks and the other, uh, quarter you have ten weeks. That is vastly different time to teach ultimately the same standard. So we really do want to have a balanced schedule. In addition to that, uh, we have had a fall break for the twenty-plus years that I got here, that I've been here. I was thinking a lot, I've seen a lot of, why don't we start August fifteenth? I'm a native Arizonan. Um, we, I like to say, don't California might Arizona? Um, we should like that. Um, so, but I'm a native Arizonan. And so I started around mid Au- August, but we did not have fall break. And we also used to go five fewer days. The Arizona State Legislature, when testing happened, they added five more days. So from when I was a kid, probably maybe when you were a kid, but we now go five more days. And then the reality is, fall break is very, very popular and common in Arizona. And so that gives that. Uh, we also, no matter what sport starts about the third week of August, um, our students have to practice fourteen days prior to playing a game. So if we didn't have that, we would have students trying out and practicing prior to even starting school. That gives some students a leg up versus other students who they didn't know. Um, in addition, we typically get out, uh, for the twenty years that I've been here, we get out before Memorial Day. Um, if we were to get out later, our high school graduation is on the field. We're allowed to have ten people. If it got too hot, we wouldn't be hiring, or we wouldn't be allowed to have all of those people. So those are just some of the things. Um, in addition, we do have state testing. The reality is, we are looking at the student achievement of our students. That is, for me, are my ultimate goal. How are we ensuring that our students have learned the grade level standards to move on to the next grade? That is the most important thing. We're educators, we're here to educate. So the given calendar, whether really within a couple of days of each other, um, the two choices, July twenty-ninth or August fourth, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-seven days to the Arizona Science Test, a hundred and forty-two days to the AASIA, and a hundred and forty-five days to the ACT. So every week or however long we, um, move forward, that's shorter time to the test. And then the last thing I did do, a, a Google search of the top ten schools, um, in the state of Arizona, and they all do start within, um, the week. We, I don't see any schools that are further into, to August or September. Um, and so when we're looking at how Arizona does things, this is the, this is what we're seeing in the state of Arizona. Those were the things that we looked at, um, but really looking at balancing of the calendar, um, and then looking at the needs of teachers, uh, the teacher days, um, that are before fall break. Um, that's how we can have parent-teacher conferences and meet with families. The teach, the break that's before winter break is so that we can make sure finals are graded, um, and everything that's back to you. So the teacher breaks that are within, that there's no students, it's so we can meet with families, um, and to have those conversations that are really important to families. That's a high-level discussion of how we got there.
Anything else? That it? All right. Thank you, Dr. Jamie Festa-Dagel. Um, at this time, we are going to open up call to the public. Um, in the call to the public, if you signed up, Leanna will call your name. You have three minutes to speak. Uh, there is a timer and there will be a buzz, uh, when your time is up. And, uh, please be respectful. Um, we are all here to work together and do what is best for our children. I think that is what we all care about, i- is the students of this district. So at this time, we're going to open it up for call to the public unless there's discussion, um, from any of the current board members.
I do have some things to say, but I think I'd rather wait until I hear it from the public.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Leanna.
Okay, we have eleven speakers. Um, first up, and the microphone's right here, is Lisa Priester.
Good evening. I am a community member, taxpayer, and certified information professional with an emphasis in governance systems. I'm here tonight to express my concern that the operations of the school board to date have been inefficient and perhaps not cost-effective. It seems to me that opening a closed and agreed-upon item perhaps should not be a priority at this time. I ask, or perhaps suggest to the board members, perhaps, because I know some of you, um, this may be your first time serving on a board and contributing to governance systems, that it might be beneficial to get the lay of the land and understand why the decisions that have been made prior to, um, your service were made. So perhaps learn to, um, learn more about the system, the players, lay of the land before implementing changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey Porter?
Good evening. Um, I have had kids in the school district since two thousand and five. Um, they started it as a little night. And, um, we did have a couple of years where I, my kids started in another school. And that school here in Lake Havasu always started on a Thursday. And I really, um, think that it's beneficial, not only for the students, but also for the parents. These kids get to go and all summer break, they're doing whatever they want and having late bedtimes. And as a mom, to try and get my kids, okay, eight o'clock bedtime is really difficult. But on a Thursday, if they start and they have a half day and they get out at one, you know, you can kind of work into that. They get all the rules and what's expected of them, supplies that they need, all on a Thursday. You have time over the weekend to get those things because not all of the things that they need are always listed on their supplies. Or, you know, some teachers will change things, which is fine. But I think that them starting on a Thursday is really beneficial. They can get what they need and come Monday, it's time to work and, and get busy. So, um, I have really enjoyed this school schedule this past year, or this year. Um, so that's just my opinion. I really like it. I think you guys are all doing a great job, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Patricia Solomon?
All right, I have a few topics here that I have written down. I do want to point out that typical summers in the United States and in Arizona are ten to twelve weeks long, not nine and a half, which is what you've cut our children down to. I do also want to point out that-
Ma'am, can you slow down a little bit and step to the mic? We can't really understand what you're saying. Thank you. You can move it down if you need to.
Calling me short?
All right, thank you.
I do want to point out that the typical summer vacation for children in the United States as well as Arizona is ten to twelve weeks, as you guys have cut it down to nine and a half for our children here. I do have four children in this school system, one at Starline and two at Smoke Tree and another entering one of these schools next year, two of which of my children are on the spectrum. I try my best to accommodate the needs of your school to make sure that my children are attending. But with children on the spectrum, as well as one with dyslexia, I am obligated to leave the town to get a lot of the specialist needs that I need. Therefore, my summer is surrounded by going on vacation and meeting those needs from children in Phoenix. Two, my son needs to go to Phoenix just to have his Alman, just so he can have a communication device. My other son and my daughter, all of my children had to go to Glendale just to be diagnosed. Having our summers is important, not to mention anybody who may be in a split home and they don't always have the time with their child, maybe fifty with dad, fifty with mom. Now, the mom may be responsible for all of the medical needs and she's still trying to take that on. I will say, missing school eighteen days out of the year is a priority of your vices, which I understand and I respect it. But just remember, as we're trying to schedule our appointments and still have family time, that is stressing on us while you're taking the summer vacation from our children. I will say that teachers already are feeling unappreciated and you have a high turnover rate. Having near, a nearly year-round schedule for teachers will only make this worse and cause your turnover rate to become worse. You're already importing people to teach our children from other countries, giving them contracts to be here to educate them. Think about that while you've got teachers in our school system that are still struggling to continue to educate our children. They're doing an amazing job and they're trying their best. But as they continue to not be able to supply for their kids and they're still having to be in a school almost year-round because after our kids are out, only nine and a half weeks that they have out, those teachers are still obligated to be there. And some of those teachers still have to do summer school for these kids. So how much time do these kids really have at home if they're obligated to be in summer school? Or how much time do these teachers really have with their own families when this all comes down to it? That would be the top priorities of my conversation tonight. Those would be my main concerns.
Thank you so much.
Chelsea Anderson?
You can move it back if you need to.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. I am a teacher as well as a parent of a child in this school district, as well as an LHUSD alumni. Um, for our kindergarten students, starting on a Thursday early release, I feel it's very beneficial for them. It is a lot of work being put into those weeks and going into a full week of school is very difficult for them. Um, the students need to adjust to that full day. Some are not used to that structured environment and have never been in a school before. We used to, we use the first two days to build our classroom community and build routines in our classroom. The following Monday, we start the week fresh and jump right into our school curriculum. I understand that it is unconventional for upper grades to start on a Thursday, but we also need to show compassion to our younger students who are not used to a full school week. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Karen Rockwell?
Oh, I don't know how to do this. Okay. Anyways, my name is Karen Rockwell. I'm a Starline teacher, fifth grade math. Um, and it was just mentioned that the older grades don't like the Thursday really, or Thursday start. We love it because you work on two days and then you get all the supplies, like a, um, family member mentioned. And, um, then they have time because we ask for certain things that are not on this, the same, um, uh, supply list. Um, so I, I one-hundred percent think we should start on a Thursday, um, early release. It's nice for all grade levels, um, to get, you know, like the, I don't know, ju- I'm so nervous. Oh my gosh!
You're doing, you're doing great, come on.
Oh my gosh. So I, that's, that's crazy that I'm nervous because I love to speak, you know? But, um, so anyways, let me get, so you get supplies and you get your, you, you set your class up how you want it. So, and you have two days to do that, you focus on that, and then month, start Monday and you get going. Now, my thing about early, early release, I just want you guys to kind of put a bug in your ear. Two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school year, four-day work week. And I'm going to tell you a four-day work week because then you can take away the early release. The early release, we can have our meetings, teacher meetings can come, like, one day a week out of the, our teacher slash staff, um, can come on Friday and come for two or three hours because it would be a longer day. But I just want you to kind of look into that. I'm putting a bug in your ear, four days, and then take away the early release. And then we have, kids get to go longer on vacation, Fridays or, um, whatnot. I have a minute and fifteen seconds. What else am I going to say? No, I'm just kidding. Um, no, so that's my biggest thing. I love starting on Thursday. Um, I have a twin sister that teaches in Winslow, Arizona. Sorry, that's where I'm from. Um, but they have early release on Friday and they have tons of absences, which if we went to a four-day work day, that Friday, um, would be, uh, I'm not talking this year. Two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, I'm putting a bug in your ear. Thank you!
Thank you.
Alana Prowell?
Good evening. My name is Alana Prowell. I am a mom to four sons. Two of them will be attending the district schools this next school year. Um, I am also a pediatric occupational therapist. Um, my son, one of my sons that will be attending school has special needs. And he was so excited after you all voted on the calendar because he already made a countdown to when he gets to start kindergarten. And I had a chance, we were, my husband and I were talking about it and he overheard us, that there was possibility that the calendar might change. And he broke down and started crying.
You're really trying to play on, play on my emotions, aren't you?
I love my little guy to pieces, but he, he was so sad. He goes, "I don't want to wait any longer. I've waited so long already. I just want to go and learn." And so from Will Prowell, he has asked, "Please leave it alone."
All right, that's it, this meeting's off.
But also from a parent of special needs, from a professional who works with kids with special needs, they thrive on having that routine. Those parents need the routine. And I heard the mom earlier talking about having different schedules and having a doctor's appointments. And I understand all of that. We travel to Phoenix frequently for multiple medical appointments. Um, but it's one of those things that you, we figured out how to make it work. And I know that there's multiple families in our district that have special needs students that rely on consistency with the school calendar as well, so that they can make those appointments, so that they can have after-care set up, so that they can have care for the summer set up. So just keeping those things in mind when you all do make your decisions. I appreciate you all opening this up to parents and to the community to be able to let you know where we all are. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kristi Rell?
Hello, how are you? I'm Kristi Rell. I have four children in the school district already, um, one at the high school and three at Starline. Ms. Rockwell was one of my kids' teacher last year. And speaking to that, starting on that Thursday has been very beneficial, um, to all my children, um, especially kids that are on the spectrum or have anxiety about starting school. Because that, that first day is kind of easy. They get their rules, they're out by one. Then they come Friday, it's a full day. Then they have the weekend to kind of process what happened and then go to school full-time. I had a kindergartner that started this year with that schedule. And he transitioned into kindergarten a lot easier than my first two, who started on a Monday and had to have an entire week of either full-day kindergarten. I want to say one of them where it was like half-day kindergarten, and that was tough as a parent. That doesn't work, especially when you have to work and then pick up at twelve, twelve-thirty, then come back at two-thirty and still fit in your eight hours of work. Um, so it is beneficial starting on a Thursday for multiple children. I think that's it for now.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bijet Sahar?
Good evening, Nor- Board, and it's Bijet Sari is the last name. Um, I, I am a parent of three children here at the school district, uh, one in the elementary school in special education, and two at the high school. Uh, my junior actually is also ju- uh, dual-enrolled at Mojave Community College and takes additional classes, um, through Primavera to receive his, uh, language credit. So, um, I want to, uh, just ask for the start date on Thursday. I think that one of the, the things that we've heard is the opportunity to buy school supplies after meeting the teachers on Thursdays. What I found as someone who likes to be extremely prepared is that what the teachers ask for and what they actually need in the classroom doesn't, um, necessarily line up. So we no longer buy our school supplies prior to that Thursday. It gives us a good weekend to figure out what we need, um, for each of the school, um, each of the schools and for each of the teachers. Um, I also believe that it is easier to transition back to waking up early and then having that weekend to get into the routine. Um, those first two days back to school are extremely stressful, dealing with, um, school drop-offs, dealing with walking, dealing with, um, all of the different things. It's a madhouse, and so I like having those two days with my kids to really, um, digest and decide to, um, talk about what had happened in those first two days of school, what's new, all of those things. Um, I also want to swing back to, it's important for finals to happen before winter break. I spoke to my boys in high school and taking the finals after winter break would be just absolutely horrific. Um, I think that if, for them to, to really do their best, it should happen before winter break. Um, and again, as going back to transition, um, I was here at a time when the, when the schools did start on a Monday and for both children in special education and in kindergarten, it was very hard. They had to, they were on a modified schedule that was different from the- They had, they were on a modified schedule that was different from the other students and it was very difficult to time how all of those things started to make sure that they had adequate transition. But I think it's, moving to that Thursday gave an opportunity for everybody to transition at the same time. It's important for us to keep our fall and spring breaks. Burnout is real. It's also a time for, as a parent with children, a child with medical needs, for us to travel and go to Phoenix for all of those things. We schedule our appointments during our breaks when we can. And then I heard that if, going back to the school board meeting, if we move the early release to a Friday, I am concerned about that retention for Friday. But as a parent, I want to make sure that my kids have enough time to take tests on Friday. So if we had a shortened Thursday, shortened day on Friday, are we going to have adequate classroom time for all of their tests that come, quizzes and everything that come on Friday? And then also to consider that a lot of our local pediatric clinics close early on Friday. So if all of our classrooms and schools close early on Fridays, we might not be able to get appointments, which means taking our kids out of classrooms Monday through Thursday when those clinics are open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Zerman?
Hello, and thank you for having this special meeting. Looking at the school calendar, I do not agree with starting in July. July and school do not belong. I come from Nebraska. We start in the middle of August. We also have to deal with snow days there. So they didn't have fall break, which I know everyone says is popular here, but maybe we look at shortening it. It is not fair to the teachers and our students to have to have a shortened summer. When you're also thinking of the families working here in town, some places cannot have all of their employees off in the month of June or July. You have to be able to spread that out a bit more. We have heard many times at the different schools about how attendance is important. So is family time. By shortening our summer, you are lessening that time with family. You're lessening that time with trips and memories that can be made. Because yes, learning happens in the school, but it also happens outside of school. And if we're taking away that time for our children to be able to experience the world, we're actually hurting them, not helping them. The other thing that I noticed looking at the school calendar, we have only really two months here where there's not a day off or a break. Maybe some of these days off need to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Nelson?
I just want to appreciate, I appreciate your time. I appreciate you having the meeting. Daughter goes to Starline. My second daughter is going to start at Starline next year. We live in a very unique state, especially recently where they've passed the ability to have people with school choice and vouchers and stuff like that. So in California, we didn't have that where I grew up. So people are choosing to put their kids in Starline. You know, we have HPA in the town. We have TELUS, or we have other schools that if we wanted vouchers to go there, we could do that. But people are choosing to put their kids here in our school district. We have a great school district. We have great, great staff, great people. And I just, coming from California, we started the day after Labor Day and we went until mid-June. That's not popular here and that's not something that I want either. But if you're gonna, the way you laid it out last week at the school board meeting, how with the quarters and the stuff like that, coming from somebody who doesn't know anything about the process here, it completely made sense to me. And I just don't want us to be, I understand that we're in social media now and we're never going to please everyone, but I saw a lot of people chirping about, being mad about the sweatshirts or the outerwear requiring the lanyards and this and that. And I saw the complete opposite side. They might have seen the jar as half-empty. I saw it as half-full. So I feel the same way with this starting in July schedule. The way you laid it out, it made sense. And if we take those days away in July to push it back a couple, it's going to have to come from somewhere else. State requires 180 days and the hours required and stuff like that. I looked into a lot of that. So the way we agreed to, the way we talked about last school board meeting, I felt like it was very fair. We talked about, you know, surveying it as it went on. And I just want to, I think that was a great kind of compromise. And I don't want us to be, let a few people online or start chirping and get us to sway from the fair compromise that I felt like we did last meeting and stuff like that. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Donna Best Carlton?
We're in trouble.
It's much easier. I don't have to raise it or lower it. I'm Donna Best Carlton. Lived in Lake Havasu since 1969 and I want to tell all of you how much I appreciate you up there working and coming back out to another meeting and calling this meeting but because you know there's concerns about the calendar. So you're doing the right thing by trying to hear everybody out, okay? But at the same time, the decision was already made, I feel. And I had called the school, so I look at the calendar three years in advance because usually it's there three years in advance. We have raised all our sons through this school district. I went to this school district, Smoke Tree School. And we now, they are married and their wives all came from this school district. They all left, went away, came back here with their careers. Two of them work for the school district now. And now our nine grandchildren, two have graduated and the rest are still, no, four have graduated and the rest are still, we have, we have one at Ora Grande, two at Starline, one at Thunderbolt and one in the high school. Freshmen, freshmen. As a matter of fact, that freshman, a young girl was so nervous about that first day of school. All she could, now take it, she's very shy, okay? She's at that gawky age. She's drop-dead gorgeous but does not know it. And is scared to death of boys. And I just remember that half-day in high school. She was so worried about what she was going to do for lunch and who she was going to sit with. She didn't even have to worry. There was no lunch that day. She got to make arrangements for it for the next day and it just made everything better. We book our fall break vacation and I called the school district and they said we have to wait for the school board to vote. So when it came out in the paper, I was on the phone and I booked our family vacation, where our whole family goes and we have an Airbnb and we don't get our money back if it changes. So I'm just asking you, there's a lot of good ideas that everybody has and some of them I'm totally for, but I'm asking you to please leave the school calendar the way it is this year. If people are upset on orchids and onions, you're always going to have that. Tell them they can wait till next year. Thank you.
All right, that's, we'll close call to the public at this time and open up for board discussion.
I'll lead off then. So when I voted yes on January 9th, I meant my yes vote. I had had time to consider the calendar, consider how we've done it in previous years. And the calendar that we have, that we adopted on January 9th is a result of a calendar committee. So that involves stakeholders, community members, parents, teachers, all of it. I feel like that Thursday start date, I'm going to call it a soft opening, like what we have for businesses. I think it's very beneficial from multiple standpoints. So you have your younger kids being able to come in and get used to routines and same thing for the older kids, but in a lower stakes environment. And so I, as I said, I voted yes on January 9th and I do intend to stick by that. We heard multiple reasons from Dr. Festadegel about how that schedule accommodates our testing. It accommodates dual enrollment students. If we were to change that, it would alter how we have to do transcripts. There are a lot of consequences and a lot of fallout, but it's, it's easy to overlook if you're not familiar with the calendar, which is why we have the calendar committee and their recommendations in the first place. So I take those very seriously. I am very glad to have had a town hall though because I think that we've been able to hear from each other about what we like and don't like and better understand the reasonings, that the dates that have been chosen are not arbitrary, that they are the result of careful consideration. Another thing I want to point out is that yes, I know that psychologically July 31st feels so early, but this year we also get out on May, or sorry, this would be for next school year, but it would be, May 21st would be the last day of school, which is also very early. So sometimes graduation is as late as May 28th if Memorial Day falls on 31st. So that does balance things out. But yes, we are starting early, but we are also ending early. I think that's all I had to say for right now. Yes, it is.
Yeah, no, I'll briefly make a comment. In large part, yes, we made a decision. The new board members, we came in and our very first meeting, we are deciding on a calendar potentially for two years. And we understand that there was a committee, but we wanted to have this meeting not just to say we're going to change it, but so that we know we have a good foundation in it. Thank you to the community members that come out because now you have a good foundation in it and understanding why it is the way it is. Through this process, we've been collecting all the information, talking with a lot of people in the community of teachers. And at this point, I do believe we have a good foundation for a calendar going forward. And I think I join with Lisa is that the likelihood is that we will be sticking with this calendar because of the, the amount of consequences and things that changing can have. There are definitely going to be changes that we are looking for, at going forward. This conversation is not done. We will have more meetings like this to get your input. But I think the 25, 26 calendar will likely look like this.
I'm sorry, the 22nd is a, it is on the schedule as a workday, but the last day is May 21st, which is a Thursday. That's when we have graduation and that is the last day for students. Yes, but we're also only, we're only starting one day early. So for next year, we would start on July 31st. This year, we started August 1st. So that is only a difference of one day. Does that make sense?
All right. Evelyn?
I'm very thankful that we were able to have this meeting. There were so many emails, so many people reaching out. It's just nice to be able to, to hear what, what you guys had to say between parents, teachers, you name it. I do like how we start on a Thursday. It's definitely easier for my kids as well. I'm thankful for the calendar committee. We definitely have an insight of what we could, what we could do for coming up. As for this calendar, we definitely voted it in. And there's many things still to look at between the dates. I'm glad she brought up between the sports. I mean, there's going to be the clubs, the college classes that intertwine, the travel club, field trips that are already somewhat in place a little bit, the testing dates. There's a lot of things to look at. So I'm definitely thankful to be a part of this right now.
Right. For me, I'm thankful all of you are here. This is what community looks like, coming together. One of the goals that we want to see is parents and teachers to be able to unify together and understand each other. I know that we're not always going to agree and that's okay. You may not always agree with every decision the board makes. You may not agree with the calendar. We're never going to be able to make everybody happy. I would love to see orchids and onions go away. Whoever created that thing, shame on you. I'm just kidding. The gut, they should, yeah, change it to the gossip channel. But anyway. But the point of this meeting was because parents overwhelmingly felt their voice needed to be heard. And anytime, whether it's a parent, a teacher, a janitor, an employee in the kitchen, you have a voice in the school district with this board. We want your voice to be heard and especially whenever there's concerns that affect your life, affect your schedules, the calendar affects your schedule. And we did vote yes on this calendar. And we wanted to hear again, Dr. Jamie Festadegel, we wanted to do this parent forum and teacher forum. There's a lot of teachers here tonight. Thank you for being here. But we wanted parents that were not in our last school board meeting, for you to be able to hear all the information of how the calendar is put together. I didn't know. I had no idea. I'm new to the school board. So, but that type of information helps you understand why things are the way they are. It doesn't mean we can't improve. There is going to be more surveys coming out for the next school calendar as well. We need to also, I want to encourage this board to take into consideration the survey that was sent out and the results of that survey. And those were overwhelmingly parents that voted on that. So these are things as we move forward and make decisions, we need to remember all voices, especially parent voices as well. And so thank you. Thank you for being here and taking those of you who signed up to express your opinion. And Dr. Jamie, you have some more information to share. As far as what if we moved, I wanted you to explain to everyone if we moved the start date, what that would actually do to the calendar.
Sure. So if we moved to August 4th, to the Monday, that's a pretty easy swap. It's how it was three years ago and we had that calendar for a while. We would pull the August, the April 24th testing day and we would pull the January, the January 5th teacher day. And so that would, the downside of that is students would be starting on the Monday. Teachers would have to work over winter break. And then that, that fourth quarter after testing to graduation, that is a hard slide. And so that, that break of one day. I did work on what if we moved it to August 7th.
Good. That's what I was about to ask you. Thank you.
The reality is to move it to August 7th, we would either need, we would need to do one of the following things. The easiest thing, don't throw things at me yet. The easiest thing would be to collapse fall break and then add those, then add those days to the November Thanksgiving break and extend that to the full five days. That gets you the three days. The other things that we could do get really messy. We could get rid of the Friday before fall break and make that a student day. I will say that's a day where especially elementary school teachers who plant meet with every single one of their parents in their classroom, we would not be giving them time and we would be saying to teachers before and after school, meet with all of your families. We could also get rid of the day, the Friday before winter break, which would require teachers to both test and grade on the same day. And then I would have to magically find a day somewhere. But ultimately, teachers would be coming back after Memorial and having workdays. And from a, from a usage of funds, we're paying teachers. I don't know that that's the best use of teacher time after school gets out. Or we could extend past Memorial Day for students and teachers into the following week if we wanted to keep those days. So it can be done. It's, it's not as, it's not squeaky clean.
I think that teachers have definitely been very open. They don't want to lose fall break.
I don't want teachers burning my house down, so. Or parents. And I can speak to the fall break. I've had numerous parents share with me that fall break they use as a vacation. So, you know, as we move forward, as I said earlier, there's going to be a survey coming out for, for the following calendar. And it's going to be a more detailed survey. Dr. Jamie Festadegel has actually already started working on that. That is going to be coming to parents, teachers, staff, everyone. It will definitely include things like fall break. It will include conversations about early release on Thursday or Friday. It will include things like a four-day school week, all the things. You see there?
I wonder who said that.
We were already ahead of you, anyway. We want to provide every option that parents, teachers and staff have brought to us. And surveys is a great way, in these open forums, how many of you? And these open forums, how many of you enjoy these open forums? It gives you an opportunity to allow your voice to be heard. If you're here tonight and you're, you're not happy, I wish you would have got up and spoke, we want your voice to be heard. So please, when we have school board meetings, when we have open forums, sign up and please speak. Your voice matters to this board, to me, as we make decisions. And again, not everyone is going to be happy, but every decision we make, we want to make sure it's best for our students, our families, and our school district. Is there anything else?
Yes. And I would not say this, except I did talk with Dr. Stone, and she said that, she thought that it was okay to say this. We would never advertise that school days are optional. It's our responsibility as a board to structure a framework that is best for student success, and we did that with this calendar in mind. That said, if July 31st is a sticking point for you, and you do not want to send your kids on that Thursday and Friday, your kids can come to school on Monday, August 4th. That will be their first day of school. Nothing bad is going to happen to you. Your kids will be just as welcome as other students. You will not get an angry phone call or email from the school. You will not get a truancy officer visit. Nothing bad is going to happen to you if you send your kids to, to school on Monday, August 4th as their first day. So I think that that might balance out, because it is important to our board to consider parent rights in this as well.
Absolutely.
And I think that that balances out your rights as a parent and as a family member with our responsibilities as board members to provide the best framework possible.
Well said.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I would really encourage our board to make a vote and a decision tonight. I think we have the information that we need, and we have heard from parents. We need letters of intent to go out. There's all sorts of contractual obligations that we have for our staff. And so if we can make a decision tonight, I think that that would be ideal.
Well said, Lisa, and thank you for the comment. And I think we should take a vote tonight. And there has been a lot of input on it, and I think Festadegal just said it well, is that the destruction of this, changing the 25, 26 calendar, it is not clean. And part of running anything is to have a well-organized calendar. And for the 2020, for the 25, 26, I think we should remain, leave it untouched. And one of the big pieces for me is, is really it comes down to about a week shifted here or there. And at the start of August, we're getting into school. You're starting the process. It is going to be hot. It is an unfortunate part of living in Lake Havasu that we have to deal with. And the question is, are we dealing with that heat when we're going into school or when we're celebrating the end of it? And so one of the major considerations that a lot of parents have said is that that graduation time.
Yeah.
If we're pushing that back to May 28th, maybe June, you're testing the Havasu weather to determine whether or not that graduation is going to be outside with your whole family or inside with a limited amount of people. And I think for me, that right now is my biggest sticking point, so.
And I agree for a vote. You know, the last thing, as we said when we opened up this forum tonight, we do not want to disrupt business as a district, and there is a lot of work that goes into putting together a school calendar. I'm thankful that we have a calendar committee, and that it's not the board that has to set and do all of that work, because there's a lot that goes into that, including what is our sports schedule look like with other, other school districts, and, and travel and all of those things. What is our travel club doing? And the last thing that I want to see is us completely discombobulate all of that. And goodness sakes, I don't want someone to lose their Airbnb money. And so for me, you know, leaving it the way that it is makes the most sense. And then sending out a parent survey, again, I understand, and this is what I told, told Dr. Stone, you know, the word July is the trigger. You know, and, and when you think about, we are starting school in July, your mind goes nuts. Okay? And so when you look at it, it's one or two days earlier than last year. I get it. And so I'm asking you, please, when we do these surveys that are coming out, they're going to be emailed, they're going to be text, we want you to respond. We need your feedback. Email us. If you do not have our email, it is on the district website. We want all of your feedback as we move forward making these decisions. But for tonight, I'm not willing to disrupt the business of the district over an orchids and onions or a few phone calls. But I do take into consideration every parent that has given their feedback. Again, parents, your voice matters. Your voice matters. Teachers, your voice matters. And as we move forward, we need your feedback. And so please fill out the surveys, please talk to us. We are approachable. We want to hear how you feel and what matters to you. So thank you.
And with that said, Dr. Festadegal will be sending out notices and further surveys. If you want to be part of the committee that is involved in setting up the calendar, please be involved. Dr. Festadegal, please have more parents involved. We want, the more voices we can have on this, the, the better survey we have, obviously, and the better decisions we can make. But at this time, I think I would motion to take a vote on affirming the calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
David Rose?
Yes.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
All right, at this time, is there any other business to be discussed? All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right.
David Rose?
Yes.
Matthew Houston?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Evelyn Tinsley?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for being here tonight.